I have plexiglass dividers if you guys need them or want them or however you guys want to do it. Does this feel comfortable to you guys? Are you guys good?
I'm fine.
Versus the classroom setting stuff?
I like it a lot better.
Yeah. You're good?
Alright.
I'm good.
I'll call the meeting to order on November 19th, 2020 at 6:03. We need to designate an alternate?
So if we don't have either one of the alternates here, then I can say no.
Okay.
We did get a resignation from Mr. Tapscott. He resigned from the board, so Jim Briscoe was the senior alternate. They moved him up to a full-time member and we will have to have one as a new member. If you guys know of anybody that does what the town administrator... I know.
Do we have to make a motion to approve Jim as?
No, the selectmen did that for us.
Okay. And I guess we'll review our minutes?
We're just reviewing the minutes now from November 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on November 5th.
Second?
Oh, second. As for the changes?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All approval? All in favor? New business, Jim Crowley, to discuss proposed zoning ordinance changes?
Jim, I've got you. Point it right up at this table and chair if you want to move up there. Yeah. I understand all the zones that we have. Probably 12, 13, 14 years ago, what we had for zoning in town was shoreline zone, resource protection in general purpose. Shoreland report, resourcing in general purpose, and it was just one set of regulations for everywhere. Planning Board broke off a separate little group to look at, it was part of the comprehensive plan, and from that they ended up with multiple different zones. This one here, you can see Transition Village, Commercial A, and... Yes, so there's Critical Rural, which is 5-acre zoning, 350 feet of road frontage, rural zoning. There's the 250, 2-acre Transitions of Same Village. We can reduce down to, I think, 10,000 square feet in the village for sizes of lots. Mixed uses, kind of down by herds, lab, and then we have Commercial A, B, and C. Not only is the lot size and road frontage difference, if we look at the chart in the book for the land use, you can do different things, or different things are prohibited in different zones. So it was a small group of people came up with these proposed changes, went through public hearing, and then it was voting it, voted in through town, and it's been tweaked and changed a little from then. So, you know, where things start and where things stop, a lot of times they would try to, like this was a radius from the center of town, it came out of the village. Some of this stuff usually tried to follow property lines and things like that. With Jim here, I would assume, is he tonight to talk about Commercial A and his property there? Oh, yes, Jim. This is Willie's here, crappy, and then the house. Smith, Jim's is back there. Which is all commercial. Oh, yes, Jim.
Number one, I want to apologize for one thing is due to the coronavirus, I lost both of my hearing aids. So if I could ask you to speak up, I would appreciate it. And I would like to thank the chairman and the rest of the planning board for allowing me to come in tonight and speak to you in reference to my little project that we're thinking of. What I'm looking to do is, since we did away with the restaurants and stuff, we've been trying to go to commercial-type businesses, rental. I ran, since 1995, I ran a couple of businesses out of there myself, until I got medical conditions that I could not do it. Then we moved in two different people in restaurants. Both endeavors failed, not because of the food, but for some other reasons. About four years ago, I came back, five years ago, I came back and sat in front of the planning board and made my building... Made my building, thank you, Dennis, made my building into a commercial establishment so that I could have any commercial people we wanted, you know, to come in without having to come to the planning board. But what has, what has happened is, over four and a half to five years, I've got, from day one, I had the real estate company move in, and on one side... See if I can run such a... On this side here is where the real estate company is. On the further side, which the little green line, the red light is, that is a photographer that is using the space for storage right at the moment. She runs her photography business out of there nights and weekends, and just leaves her stuff set up and does it from there. I have four other areas that I would like to put into operation and get rented out to pay some of the expenses of the property. I was looking into turning in the building into some rental space for apartments. We have, in the town of Acton, we have no apartments available to anybody. These will not be low-income apartments, these will be affordable apartments. Trying to keep, I've had a lot of call, I've had a lot of call in the last year and a half from elderly people wanting to rent the area as, for apartments, and I just, just couldn't do it because of the regulations under the Commercial Zone A. Makes it extremely difficult to do anything other than a retail business out of there. And so I guess I have to, what I'm saying is, I'm coming to you tonight to see what we can do to make this apartment project, up to four apartments in that building, two-bedroom apartments, come to life and make it happen. Because I need to, I need to do something financially to make this building profitable instead of paying taxes and insurances on something that's 80% empty. Is there any questions that anybody would like to ask?
How many units did you say, Jim? How many units?
Four. No more than four.
I would, I would ask, Jeremy, do you, or Kenny, can you explain what the restrictions are? Why you just can't do it?
Well, I've came in to talk with Kenny a number of times in reference to the restrictions. I was going to apply for a building permit to do these apartments. I have one right now up over the real estate office, it's 90% done, and I've stopped working on it. Because he told me that we sat there for about an hour going through regulations, regulations, saying that residential units in a commercial zone was illegal to have. And we went on and it continued, and it basically said something, if you put a commercial, if you put a residential unit into your, you have to have 300 feet extra of road frontage. Setback was, was different, but it was for every unit that you put in. So they definitely made it that they didn't want to have any apartments or any, any housing areas in that area. So this is step one for me, the icebreaker, to try to get this changed around, to see how we could do it, to make this, this project happen, and get some reasonable, affordable housing in the, in the Acton area.
And there's other restrictions, Jim, that were presented. For example, you would have to hook the septic into...
Oh, well, it went all the way, it went all the way down, it went all the way down that I, my road frontages, I had to have 300 feet of road frontages for each unit. Acres of land had something to do with it. But the most ridiculous one of all was the very last one where I had to, I had, I would have to hitch up to town water and sewerage. And I just kind of chuckled with that. I made a comment to Ken, I says, "I have enough land up there that we can make the first two happen, and then I'll dig a ditch of the road and call you and ask you to put the water and sewerage in." We know that we're not going to see water and sewerage for a long, long time. The ordinances that are changed, have been changed many times over the years. I think they're definitely not up to date, they're missing a lot of things. The most important thing of all is, you have a planning board committee set up to go over the building structures of this town when somebody applies for a building permit, conditional use, for commercial use. Anybody can build a, build an outside of a commercial area, say in a mixed-use area, basically like a whole nine yards there down here, just beyond Wild Willys. They're totally exempt from, you know, they could build anything, they want to put apartments in. All they have to do is come in and speak with the code enforcement officer, apply for a conditional use permit, meet the conditional use permits set up, just like anybody that would come in from the commercial thing. You know, it's the same procedure, you know, why are there two different requirements? The property that my building is on was a family property when we started out, when all this stuff was, they designated Commercial A, basically two houses down, three houses down from me now. And so I have a total, I think, five structures, five residential structures all around me. But it's, it's called a non... Being, being a commercial zone, it's a non...
Non-commercial use?
Yeah. Type situation where I can't have residential structures in my building. What I'm just trying to do is to cover my expenses on the building and starting to make the moves I need to make and see, asking you people here tonight to try to help me out and get the, start looking at the regulations to see what we need for, to change, to make this happen. A lot of the, a lot of the stuff that's in the book is so outrageous that, you know, you can't do a thing. Like hitching up, like I said, to the water and sewerage, that, that would never happen. I do have on my complex, I have a septic system that could probably run half the town of Acton. When I had restaurants in there, I, I had to put a septic system in to meet 75 seats. And what's that consist of is five 2,000-gallon septic tanks, 60 chambers, and a large, a large field for this to all go in, which is done, and I have, the septic system is enough to run a 75-seat restaurant seven days a week. So I would have no issues with my septic systems, my water. The only issue I have is getting this Commercial Zone A changed. If you notice on the board, it's only on one side of the street. Right there. Across the street, there is a family campground, which is a 180-site campground that runs the whole list, he's, he's in, he's in the mixed-use area. So he was able to do what he did. Like I said before, it's been almost five years I've had one person, one person contact me in reference to rental space, and they wanted to put a sub shop in, and that didn't work out. Which you all know, by nine o'clock, or I should say eight o'clock after Labor Day, they roll up the sidewalks in Acton and nothing can happen at all. There's no traffic, there's no nothing. So that's what I'm finding during the coronavirus is that nobody, nobody is looking for any rental spaces because the people that are working are, 95% of them are working from home. And where we're located in Acton, there's just no traffic. It does not allow for commercial office space or anything like that.
Are the restrictions a little bit over the top in comparison to what I was...
It's fairly confident in the commercial zone, you don't have residential uses. So if we look at the land use chart, this is, I think, Commercial A, yeah. Families allowed, an AAU, which is kind of an apartment, a building is allowed, two families allowed. The multifamilies are not, that's three of one units. And H66 is the multifamily regulation. And these, this section 514 hasn't been changed in the 23 years I've been here. So I know when they started breaking the zones up and thought, they didn't want a lot of the commercial zones sucked up with a bunch of residential stuff, but Acton may just be a bedroom community set up for residential with very little commercial. Attached is allowed, the AAUs are allowed, the multifamily... For the dwelling units. And we talked a little bit about elderly housing and stuff like that early on, that we really needed to look at the zoning because nobody's going to put an elderly complex in with this type of zoning. We cannot attract anybody on any lots, not just Jim's small apartments, but if we were trying to get some 55 and older communities with affordable housing. So the lot area is, shall be equal to the required amount of equivocal number of units. General road frontage, 300 feet, rural district for each dwelling, that kind of fixes itself. Need or exceed other dimensional requirements, that's the easy one. But instantly right there, the lot area, so each acreage would have to be per unit. Maximum is 10 dwelling units per building, that doesn't affect Jim, but in reality, if somebody's coming in to do a larger elderly-type apartment, usually they, they need at least 30 to do anything. Shall be connected to private or public water supply, that's not an issue there. Multi-family dwellers connected to public sewer, if available, or a central collection system. I think, Jim, your system's actually an engineered septic system, it's so big, the size of it, and I think it's the only engineered system in town.
Yeah.
No parking. So that's the multifamily, so it's three or more units that's not allowed in the commercial zone. And even if he wasn't in the commercial zone, he'd be looking at, you know, if you were trying to do 10 units, 3,000 feet of road frontage. And really, and that's why we really don't have any, and it could have been set up for that reason that we didn't want to back the buildings in town. That could have been the intention of that, to require that not allowed.
Ken, I'm looking at B, the minimum road frontage will be 300 feet in the rural district for each... Oh, he's not in the rural district. Each multifamily structure. So each means multifamily structure, and he only has one multifamily structure, correct? You wouldn't consider the condos to be individual structures?
No, it's a structure per unit.
Okay.
And I don't know why rural was thrown in there.
Well, multifamily dwelling units are allowed in the rural, that's the most common place they'd be located or something?
Or it could be critical rural. But you'd want to close the services usually, if, if it's on the 55 and older side, but...
This thing's, the land use charts is, multifamily dwellings are not prohibited in the, are not allowed in the critical rural.
Correct, it's site plan review, permitted, transition, rural, mixed use.
Yeah, it's not committed, permitted in commercial, and we're, yep.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, it would be two acres per... Probably a number of single-family dwelling units. So it's definitely not attractive for somebody to do a multifamily building.
We, we've talked quite a bit since I've been on the board about zoning maps and zoning itself. When these maps were made, they were made to suit the businesses that existed in the town at that time. And as you can see, that's very clear by where the zones are. We've talked quite a bit in the last couple of years about addressing some of these issues because there's a lot of commercial in town that isn't on the maps. But you can have commercial in residential. You can still have a commercial business in a residential area. This needs to be addressed. The campground is a commercial business, for example. And they're not in the commercial zone at all. We have other construction companies on different roads. A father on, on the 109, we have, we have businesses up there. We have them on the Sandbin Road, we have them on the Milton Mills Road, we've got them on both every road in town. And so the truth of the matter is, the zoning maps are really outdated, even though we, we did them only a few years back. Lots changed in the last 10 years or so in this time. So with that being said, that's what the planning board was looking at a year ago. And it is, Kenny said, and a few other people that's addressed the board, said that this, the zoning ordinances are something that's constantly, or should be anyway, constantly evolving with the, with the times. Obviously, what was true in 1980, or 1990, or 2000, or 2010, some of it does apply still, but a lot of it doesn't. When they put that in commercial zone, when the Smiths had their, their restaurant and the post office there, there was plenty of houses around that property. I think it's a shame, especially... I think it's a shame, especially if you have a good building, or a nice building, like the Crowley's have. It's right on 109, it's easy access to fire and rescue, it's, I think it's a shame that we have these restrictions on a piece of property like that, and 500 feet down the road, you could do exactly what Jim wants and you can't. But he can't, it doesn't make any sense to me. There's no effect really on the environment, it isn't like somebody's trying to do something around, close to one of the lakes. And again, we're supposed to be looking at affordable housing for people. That's what the state wants us to do, and that's what our comprehensive plan says we should be doing. And my only issue is, and where I'm always the one that always says pretty much what's on my mind, to get this changed, Jim. The planning board can work to address these issues and see what works and doesn't work, you know, something that obviously is absolutely ridiculous. But the problem is, a year ago, as you know, because you were on the board, we did a lot of work to get some zoning changes. And when we had the town meeting this year, we had changes, we had a public hearing, it's all set to go. The selectmen refused to print it on the paper for it to be voted on. So the way things are right now, we don't know what we're going to have at another town meeting, if it's going to be the same thing again or not. So the planning board could come up with those changes, like we did different stuff last year that we wanted to move forward. And the board of selectmen could say, we're not going to print it on the paper again because it costs too much. So all the work that the planning board would do to address not just this issue, but other issues, could all be for nothing. And it is a lot of work to go through this stuff and come up with solutions to the issues that's in front of us, in front of the townspeople. And we are supposed to be doing what's in the best interest of the townspeople. You know what I mean, regardless of where they live. And it's some hard decisions sometimes, but that's what we're supposed to be doing, what works for our community, and the future of our community. And the way things are moving in society, we are looking towards, as far as I'm concerned anyway, having apartments in the town of Acton for people to bear living. And being on the main road, honestly, is the best place for them. For fire, rescue, all kinds of services, being on the main road that goes through town. It's a lot better than where I live, way back on a dirt road somewhere that you don't know, even knows where it is. For health and safety, I think that's what we want to be doing. But I think the only guarantee, Jim, working with the planning board, and I believe the planning board will work with you to try to make this work, make some changes, so I shouldn't talk for the whole board, but they always have worked with people. But the only guarantee you can have, that I can see in the next year, is if the fact that to guarantee there'll be a vote on the changes, is you'd have to do a petition to have the changes made. And that's not anything against the planning board, it's just to guarantee that within a year or whatever, whatever timeframe it takes, that it'll be forward to the people. That's just my opinion.
Kenny, this, for Jim's company, that zoning map, was that kind of a comprehensive plan, were they wanting to...
It was a subcommittee from the planning board that, and it was just planning board members, Tom Cash and John Moore, really, were the ones that had a lot of time in it.
They designated that area that...
And I've seen it happen in multiple different towns, where you start with a map and a bunch of highlighters, and people start drawing different areas for it. And I just want to clarify one thing on Dennis. When I had a discussion with the selectmen for moving our warrant articles ahead, I didn't want them in a mail-in ballot type form, because there was going to be discussion needed to talk about those, so I thought, it cost back in April, we thought we'd have a September town meeting, or an October one or something. So I told them to hold that off from being on the mail-out ballot, or however that worked, and we'd just pick it up at the September, September town meeting, so we can discuss it. Because a lot of times, when you're going to vote for this stuff, it's the first time most people have ever heard, they don't know what you're talking about. Although when we expanded the shoreline zoning, the resource protection out as dramatic as it got, we ended up sending a letter to everybody in town, saying, you know, you're locked, maybe get out of there.
I appreciate that conversation, Ken, you had with them, which I really didn't know. I was just going by what they, directive they gave Jennifer at one of the selectmen's meetings, there'd be too much paper to print it off.
So, back to our question, this was made by the subcommittee, comprehensive, that zone right there?
I can't remember if it was actually Comprehensive Plan Committee, there was a Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee that was voting for a town meeting, and a lot of those members got together with some members on the planning board, and they worked on those proposed zoning and changes, and brought it back to the planning board weekly and moved forward with that.
That was a directive out of the Comprehensive Plan. It wasn't, the Comprehensive Plan didn't have the maps, but what the Comprehensive Plan said was, you needed to develop these zones.
There's no...
And that's how it went.
But who delineated that area, that was the planning board? Or no, it was the planning board?
No, I think it was a subcommittee. I know Virginia attended some of the meetings too, because her property was...
A subcommittee of the planning board?
Yeah.
So, I think he does a lot of good points, just why I'm just not fair, it's right down the street, he's doing exactly what he wants to do.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to...
Look at it.
Definitely look into it, and I think it would be...
It makes sense that it's hard, because Acton doesn't have a downtown district, we don't have a commercial thing, so 109 is the main road that can be the commercial zone. But I know such as Dollar General, they don't want to be on a 55 mile an hour road, they want to be somewhere where that speed limit drops down to 30, because they know with their data that people stop more when you're going slower, and you have to pick that up, and there's walking distances and things like that. So whether any of that commercial that we had, the dock sales go in and things like that, that corner lot by Iron Tails is all commercial, whether we see that stuff get developed over time or not. Definitely affordable housing is, workforce housing is a good route to go, because as you say, entry-level housing, 300,000 or so, it's not cheap housing, and somebody with one bedroom apartments are much more attracted than two or three bedroom apartments. The same as, you know, when we look at these restrictions, and we've talked about 55 and older communities, small, thousand square foot homes on slabs, you know, nice type things, with the regulations we have, it's not doable. It basically is set up for just submissions, so we can never entice anybody to come in. And once you have that 55 and older, we lose our residents as they get older, they don't need the big farmhouse, they don't need the big lake house, and we see them moving to Sanford, we see them moving out of town as they get older. If we have another area for them to move in town, we keep those residents in town, and also their property becomes available for the other people coming up in town as well. It doesn't help with the affordability part of it, it's still going to be expensive stuff, but...
And they're moving out because of need, not because they want to. You know, they lived here for 50 years, and they got to go find a cheaper place to live. And it's too bad there's community members for that to happen.
So there's four different ways something would move, be amended in the zoning ordinance, that'd be a majority vote of you guys to move it forward, so we can bring it to town meeting. Board of the selectmen, individual through the request of the planning board could initiate, that's almost where we're at, or a written petition, with the number always equal to 10% of the last governor's election.
The petition's a hard one too, without town meeting, it kind of loses momentum, so to speak.
Other than the fact, Gavin, you have to have a vote if you do a petition, that's just, just like we had the vote a few weeks ago.
Next town meeting?
Depends on what type of petition you do.
Right, how it's written.
Petition's brought directly to the floor of town meeting, it's...
They don't have to be, Gavin, there's two types of petitions.
Okay.
There's two types, there's a citizen's petition and a, the other one, and it's two different processes. Well, the citizen's petition, for example...
That's the one I've done. You collect the signatures?
Yeah, and...
Depends on how it's written, you could either keep it rather, or you could have it on top of it.
Right.
Depending upon how you lay out the building.
And there's one, if the petition, the petition is, can call the town meeting if the selectmen refuse to. And the notary public does that, and then you do whatever, so...
But all the time, we have the signatures, and it's legal, the petition's all out, it's kind of a problem. But I figure we'd have to go that way?
I hope not.
Definitely, I think we would need to look at something first, researching what other towns do, what other things do, and it's, I mean, you guys could simply erase the red on the map and turn it back to green. I mean, it's as simple as that, or look at changing the regulations that you want multifamily allowed in commercial.
Right, change the definition of Commercial A District.
And you're...
Or all the commercial districts.
And it's really easy to look at one page, you say we want to change that, but then we got to go find the road frontage thing and reduce that for, depending on... And you don't change the ordinance for one person, you change it for a town line probably. And whenever we put regulations in because of one specific issue, it's always haunted us in the past for everything else we've tried to do. So, you know, we can look at it, and I'm sure some of the other towns can read things like that, they've got a lot of commercial, and we can see what they're doing in that as well too. I can run it through the planner, the iContract planner, and see what he thinks.
Where did that Mr. Go, that probably, each one road there?
We've only got one bar of Wi-Fi, so...
It's also the very first page of your zoning ordinance.
Yeah. I'm trying to get rid of the zoning, it looks like the field's across the street with that newer cape that was built right in there.
The orchard's directly across from it, you can see, and the road down to Apple Valley goes between the two orchard blocks, so to speak, it's directly down the hill from that.
Yeah, here's the road down to Apple Valley Campground, right here.
Yeah.
Then you got three houses, Jim.
It doesn't go as goose...
Before that, Goose Pond, between Goose Pond and...
Now Goose Pond looks like it's...
Three houses, four houses.
Comes out right there, so...
Two rammeries. And you got the next house, and you got that house, there's at least three houses between Goose Pond over there. One, two, three, four, three.
So it's coming right into this area here. So it ran parallel with that property line right there, because at this point, it became all existing residential from there down.
Do you remember the discussion of that, why that theory of it was chosen to have business, was it because the Comprehensive Plan required...
I think there were kind of some businesses already there, and the board was trying to, or the subcommittee was trying to establish some commercial zones, to entice and bring it into one certain area, not mix it through into residential all over. And really, it's just limited to 109, the Commercial A. Is this someone, H R, or Zeno?
Yeah, that's where the Doyle's and the orchard both can.
Are those A or B?
I don't know, they're purple, might as well see.
All right, so B.
See?
Yeah, you have C.
That's the orchard, or Doyle's, and Doyle's.
And again, different regulations, different views, different things. So, we go back to the town meeting that we never had, we had the 20,000 set aside for contract planner to come in, and one of my first things was, look at the zoning ordinance, tell us when we need to start fixing it, what we need to address. How many units were you thinking in your building, Jim?
Pardon me?
How many units were you thinking?
No more than four, realistically, three.
Plus the real estate?
Plus the real estate office, the real estate office and the photographer.
The five uses, 1,500 feet of road frontage. And 10 acres. So the board doesn't have to make any decisions tonight, but just thinking that, you know, we have a resident that has an issue, he's brought it to your attention, would give us something to think about, and over time, and I think I talked at the last meeting, that we've got four articles already, I didn't want to get a bunch more stuff going and have last year's stuff and this year's stuff, and have it all confusing, while we had public hearings before, while we haven't, but who knows who will end up in a month or two.
I agree. My thing is, regardless of all the regulations and the holdbacks on stuff, and the reasons why we don't do this, because of COVID, or this or that, the world still has to move on, and people still need to live, and they still need to be able to do things. And I agree, we can't change zoning for, you know, one person, but we've already established, at least the pass board did, there's a lot of stuff in here that needs to be addressed, and that's just one of the issues, I guess, is my point. From where I'm coming from.
Please, it's not about Jim.
It's reading the regulation, and it doesn't make any sense, if you were to try to do a multifamily building, that they need two acres per...
It doesn't make any...
And there must be a better per dwelling versus per apartment, it just sounds like a bad thing, and in reality, whether we're very young entering or very old, we don't need five acres per unit and 350 feet of road frontage per dwelling. I realize the outskirts of town, the dock ring is where they wanted to keep it rural, Acton, but...
So prior to this being, when the subcommittee did this, prior to that, he genuinely agreed with what he wants to do?
I would have to look at an older book, but he was just in general purpose, it probably, none of the multifamily stuff is new. He would have still needed the, the lot area would have killed him. Because that 514.2, nothing's been changed in that for years, I don't believe.
We only had one of those in town anyway, then we can. That was up on the H Road. Well, two places on one lot.
Oh. We'll see a lot of two houses on one lot. I mean, originally, this parcel here was three businesses on one lot. That's why if you ever look at the, the lot lines are so crazy, it's because they had an existing building, two commercial businesses and a residential all in one lot. And then over time, you know, the zoning did allow them to break that up as equally as practical.
I mean, I think we look at this, and then at the same time, look at all the other commercial businesses around town that aren't in the commercial zone.
Do you have to refer to that?
You know what I mean? It doesn't, it's two sets of standards there.
Are you somebody who's penalized?
And I wouldn't call it home occupation commercial so much. Somebody selling beans or travel agency out of their house. It comes back up to the contractor, as we talked about a few years ago. They're not permitted use, but we have them everywhere, and that's something we looked at a couple of years ago to try to get that to be permitted use, so they're not violations all over town, because we want them and need them. We're not getting a ton of complaints over it and stuff like that, but if you have a commercial area, you, the intention is you will attract commercial businesses, which a lot of times, thinking tax-wise, you're going to get great tax revenue out of it without impacts usually.
But I think the zoning needs to be very specific for everybody, so there's no room for interpretation, if it's done right. Because then if there's no room for interpretation, then anybody's, everybody's under the same restrictions, non-restrictions, everybody's equal.
What would be the cleanest way to do that, Ken? If you move the business zone, I'm just asking.
We still have the, if you're in a multifamily, A lot area shall be equal to that required for each equivalent number of single-family dwelling units. Right off the bat, that, to me, that tells me two acres per unit, but on the other hand, I could say, "Ooh, what does that even mean?" Lot area and acres are required for a total number of single-family dwelling units. You know, if it said each dwelling in a multifamily building would need to have the same amount of acreage per thing, you know, so there's a lot of, a lot of times people think that's black and white, but you can have somebody else read back and say, "I don't know what that means." So zoning, it's filled with grayness that somebody, one attorney says, "This is what it says," and the other attorney's, "This is what it says." You know, each time we open it, we find something new, and we mark it up, and then next town meeting, we try to clean it up. It definitely needs a relooking at it. We would have to reduce lot area, and then the next one, it talks about the road frontage shall be 300 feet in the rural district for each multifamily structure. If permitted in all zones, why does it just become rural? I'm not sure. Does that mean we don't need road frontage per, but some ways out, I could find in the block that it will say each dwelling unit needs the minimum per zoning district, so it's definitely not attractive to anybody trying to do more than, anyways, you know, critical rural or commercial.
I mean, you could twist it a little bit for multifamily dwellings, like you did, we did with the village area. You know what I mean? We've only got to have an acre or whatever.
Yeah, you'd have the 10,000 square feet.
You know, you can do that here, and 10,000 square feet's like a quarter of an acre. You know what I mean? So to think that you need two acres for each apartment or whatever you want, that's absolutely ridiculous, you know? This right here, you can have 10,000 square feet out to a certain point, and then you get, look over from your house over there, and he's got to have three acres, so you know, it doesn't make any sense. If you're talking from here, and I probably shouldn't even say this, to the other end of Acton Ridge, that would be, I can see where it'd be so much of a difference, because it's a whole different environment. But here, you're all talking the same environment, you know what I mean?
And to have reduced it down to 10,000 square foot lot size in the village, there's no, I mean, just off the top of my head, I can't think of very many places where you could do several units in one area. It's all built out. I mean, there's an orchard here, and a junkyard there or something like that, but it's not conducive.
In 20 years, you set up a petition.
I see the word rural thrown into that, so Acton Ridge changed 12, 13 years ago, just that version, but I think most of it stayed up from, definitely, in 20 years. I don't remember much discussion and change in that area.
I remember the discussions, but I don't remember when they were.
I think it needs to be reviewed again. It's not an Acton issue at all. That's our case. Probably keep down the road.
Across the street. It's allowing across the street, too, and that's frustrating. Same as my house, the zoning district is different across the street totally, and the D R regulations are different across the street. I mean, some ways you have to draw a line for a lot of this stuff, and somebody's not going to be happy when that line hurts them or helps them, or they don't want that right next door, and we brought that line right there, too. It's tough. It's definitely easier when it was general purpose and showman's own. You start bringing in all the other stuff. But on the other hand, you know, if somebody was trying to have forethought and think ahead to bring our commercial or our larger development into where the need for services were much closer, versus like you're saying, go all the way up to Acton Ridge, because we've got, and it's allowed up there, you know, elderly home complex or something like that, it's probably wouldn't be cost-effective for somebody, because people wouldn't want to live up there. As you get older, you want to be back, get closer, closer to 109, closer to Sanford and things like that.
But we know our maps are up to date. You know, it doesn't, we know that, and I just, like Jim says, we need to address it, so it's, these today's, whatever you want to call it, you know, fair for everybody.
It's restricted taxpayer who owns it, who takes care of the property. I understand you have an argument, you know, and you all pay attention to all this replacement, which is, really doesn't make too much sense to me. We're right across the street, it's just a matter of, because you people drew up a map, they have their reasons, and I'll put attention to restrict someone, you know.
I guess, Jim, it's kind of like the subdivisions we used to do years ago, and we have the most how many thousands of 50-foot lots, 100-foot lots around the lake. There's a reason why we changed it. Okay, because it really wasn't the right thing to be doing. And if we had known then what we know now, they never would have existed to begin with. And this is why I say we need to continually look at this stuff and make modifications to fit today's times and the future. Because this is a bedroom community. That's just what it is, always has been. And, you know, I could see businesses here, somebody like Jim will remember all the businesses that used to be in Sanford. Well, most of them are gone now, but there used to be a lot, and all of us were bedroom communities, and we're going to continue to be that, because we have no business other than a store or a restaurant, you know what I mean? There is no, it's a bedroom community, and in our comprehensive plan, we should be addressing it. It says we should be.
By law, the comprehensive plan, they have to uphold all the different regulations?
Yeah.
Is it by law that the comprehensive plan is submitted to the state via cost to half, you mean?
It's local rule, Jim. The only thing you've got to have is a comprehensive plan. Everything's local rule, basically.
The bigger the area, the more...
We don't know.
The, some of the other commercial places down by the fairgrounds and stuff, we've got a couple down there, lots, and, you know, I talk to the owners of the property all the time, to try to come up and think of what would work there. And, I mean, they mentioned the Roman Jones and things like this. I don't think they'd get the car volume to support almost anything, because as Jim said, after Labor Day, things die down pretty quickly. We definitely have a water, lake-type environment, both in storage and repairs and maintenance, but it's hard to really envision what type of businesses would flourish, because obviously, by the time you, who would have thought of an animal rescue facility coming to town? We would have never guessed at that, but, I mean, this, $30 million going into something like that, any of these businesses, multi-million dollar ventures, and to try to divide that out to get the money back in a reasonable amount of time, besides, I mean, convenience store seems to be about the only thing, and you do have one down the street already, so it's hard to guess, you know, what would be attractive for somebody to come? You know, what type of business is going to want to come there? Shy of a manufacturing-type place.
Do you hear me, Gavin? You must have heard about that. What's the intention behind that area? Does it grow? Maybe growth?
I don't think I was on the board. Which area? Are you talking about Jim's?
Jim's, yeah.
I mean, I wasn't on the board, but I, my instinct is just that it was already the potty shed, and there was already these restaurant-style businesses there, so they just kind of, they're like, "We don't want to put a commercial district over all residential. This is just where we can fit the thing in," kind of. I'm not sure what the exact impetus was.
I know those conversations, I remember, they wanted to keep all the commercial, like I said, on the main road, and because it would be an impact on all of us, say, if you had some kind of a business that had big trucks that was traveling the H Road every day. I mean, it would cost us more money to maintain the road and stuff. And so they tried, they tried to keep all the businesses there, but I think one thing that's very interesting, if you look at the mixed use on the map, down to French Street in Hertz Lumber, they allow all the housing and stuff down there with a business. That's the only place in town that we have the mixed use. And the reason why they put these zones on this map was because those were the, where the existing businesses were. Because every one of them, when this was done, this is where the businesses were.
So that's how they decided?
That's how they decided where to put it.
Where to put it, where would you want to encourage it to be?
Right, because this is where the businesses were at the time.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you look at going up the H Road like that, purple one there, where that goes to the right a little bit more, that's where the orchard is. Okay? Then you go up farther, and you got Larry Doyle's, and then you got Pat Doyle's on the other side. Do you know what isn't?
So the planning was basically where business already was, it wasn't looking out?
Right. And you go up here, you got muses, you got the airstrip, you got this, you got Clinton Horn, well, there's no Clinton Horn's pit anymore, but Turk's pit.
As far as growth, what was the school, like 370 feet or 100?
Oh, yeah, it was 300 and like...
Yeah, 130, 20?
It was close to 320.
Something like that, about 116?
Yeah, it isn't, it isn't very big.
Exactly.
And that's why I was saying, Jim, with this comprehensive plan, there's things in that comprehensive plan that we're supposed to be doing. Either we've already done it a long time ago, like with the sports fields and stuff, or we just don't, we don't need to put a second story on the school, and that's supposed to have been already done. You know what I mean? There's so much in there that doesn't meet today's, I appreciate what they did, and all the work they put into it, and the way things were looking. They were doing all projections, information from the state, what the state was saying, but we took a turn in this town, and...
Pretty much everywhere.
You know, I know we're still building places, but it's different people that are moving in. You know, we don't have, like you say, 320 kids at the elementary and 120 going to high school.
Right.
Any more, and it's starting to rise again some, but...
The only population that's growing is the elderly.
Exactly.
And this essentially restricts...
Exactly, Jim, and that's my whole point, I guess. You just said it better than I did.
And it really is causing a lot of them to have to move out in Sanford.
We see it all the time.
Yeah, so...
It's a shame.
I don't understand it. It just doesn't make sense to me, you know? I don't know what you guys think.
No, it's, if you lose the elders, you lose a lot of history and whatnot. I mean, they've made the town, you know, you got to admit, and why should they move out? Because everything's closer to them. They can find an affordable place to live in town.
What do you think, John?
Well, I'm very sympathetic to the equity discussion you're talking about, you know, and Jim's problem. I think that has to be addressed. I just think we have to make sure we don't throw the bathwater and the baby out at the same time. Your point, Dennis, about, you know, they look forward and they made plans, well, that's what we're going to do, too.
Yeah.
You only can work with the information, you know, you can only work with the projections you have, and that's what they did. And, you know, I'm sitting here trying to think of, well, okay, what is the reason for that zone?
Sure.
Yeah, and so, that's where the business was, we wanted to try and grow it there. To me, that hadn't worked, right? Okay, we made that zone, if we brought in a whole bunch of business? No. So what is, what is the best way to address that? With, again, not maybe opening Pandora's Box. And I say Pandora's Box, because my reading of the admittedly, what, 15-year-old survey was, the town was kind of a little, let's say, hesitant about multifamily apartment-type buildings. So, you know, again, I'm sympathetic. It's absolutely not equitable, and it has to be addressed. Like you asked earlier, what's the path of least resistance? I think that's what we have to look at, and then we're going to have to think long and hard about the consequences of what we do.
How would you phrase this discussion of your action plan?
Um, I don't know what... We all have to come up with our own personal ideas on how we can shape the zoning ordinance to update these issues. If we're looking at the multifamily dwellings, we need to try to take into consideration the elderly housing issue and try to integrate that into the multifamily dwellings. the elderly housing issue and try to integrate that into the multifamily dwellings somehow. The commercial districts themselves, I mean, we've had discussion about expanding the commercial district so that it's a larger part of 109 or whatever, but that doesn't seem like that's really going to fix...
How would you do that though?
It's not really going to fix the issues that we're dealing with right now.
We talked about sending a survey out to the residents or having someone lines, we get input from the residents as well too, to see what they would want in town. And I'm sure everyone would love to have a little pharmacy down here or I know one time across from the fairgrounds, there was a shopping center of some kind, grocery store going in, but mathematically, I just can't see it supporting the multiple million dollars for these projects to come through. Again, it's a seasonal basis, it's a residential type community, and that would be something for the board to look at. Maybe between now and the next meeting, we all just Google a different town and just kind of look at their ordinances and see how they address it. Chris had a good idea, Alfred's got some commercials, got a main strip through town. I think there's a store, that must be the downtown crowd, the country store, that's it, besides the clubhouse.
Or even Waterboro, Waterboro's grown into after all these years.
Yeah, yeah. So you'd really look at it to restrict the growth you don't want and encourage the growth you do want. And as Dennis says, it's constantly changing. We wouldn't have ever thought everything's going to be shut down for a year, a year ago. There's no way you're going to do anything like that. So things change all the time and all of a sudden, we had dozens of people from town which would get on the train and go to downtown Boston and work and take the train back all the time. They weren't working from home. Nobody's leaving at all. So things change dramatically, they change fast, there's zoning and municipal government, takes a while to catch up to it, but...
And there's no admin, excuse me, Jim, there's no administrative way to address this particular issue?
He could go to the zoning board, but unlikely he should be denied at the zoning board.
They'll just follow what's written?
Yeah, state law, there's several criteria you need to get variance and yield a reasonable return financially is the first question and you're done at that point right there, so...
Appeals is pretty restrictive.
Yeah.
Very, very restrictive.
A variance would be granted for already locked that you can't build on, not a garage addition or something like that. So there's only really a tough avenue to go through. And it's hard to, we can make it a permitted use very easily, we'll change the line, change this, change that. Then we have to look also at that multifamily where we require a tweak is per unit and the road front is per unit and it's gray whether it is or isn't or not. Need to clean that up dramatically and then you have to figure out where do we want these multifamilies? Not in the critical rural, only in the commercial, rural or all over town, not in the shoreline zone definitely, and not in the RP.
I give you guys an example, it was the forestry thing. We was what, two years trying to get anything to do with forestry out of our ordinances? And we thought we were all done and then we still had the definition or something and they told us we had to take that out.
Still doing it.
You know, I mean, so it is very, trying to find everything because all you can do is find that one word someplace else and then it applies again. I mean, in the past, the way we've done it and I'm not promoting it one way or the other. Obviously, it's up to the board, but we've done a subcommittee to work on this, do the legwork and then bring it back to the full board. Once they've got some work done, or need some more ideas or wherever you're going or whatever.
I guess my main thing is that he's facing restrictions because of where it fell on the map, you know?
And another way to really look at it too is the map fell on him. He was there, there was the restriction for the road front into the acres, but then zoning came on top of it as well.
Right.
And a lot of when this stuff was done, I don't think people understood the consequences that, you know, what ramifications would be down the road to some of these decisions because it didn't really seem like that big a deal, you know?
Guarantee you that'll happen with decisions we make.
Oh, Jim. The only thing you could really plan on, I guess, in the future, provided I'm around, I'm always going to have something to say. That's my guarantee, I guess, you can put in a comprehensive plan and say, this is what we're going to have for the next 30 years.
This was senior housing down in Dover, New Hampshire, Stewart Properties, they're all over the place and they look for communities that are inviting for them and bringing, I think that's the 76 units they put into this. And I think the senior housing is somewhat income based, $600 to $800 a month is what these people were paying for the rentals, you know?
Is that the one in Springfield, senior housing?
The one across from the Springfield Library?
Yeah.
No, that's not senior housing. Yeah, that's anybody. Old Marlin Hall from Nassau, that's senior housing. And that's, I think, 25 units are in there.
Where was this located? Did you show?
That was Dover, New Hampshire.
And that's town water?
City water, city sewer.
That's a huge difference too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, for some of the trade area.
Yeah, and usuals. A lot of supply would be somewhat tough to get, but in Jim's case, the water from the campground comes from that anyway, so he's got, he's producing water from his site now for, what, 140 something campers? Can't talk with my mask down and he can't handle it with the mask, the heaters.
How many, how many people are you feeding off your well, Jim, over there?
What's that?
How many, how many places are you feeding off your well over there? You were doing the campground, right?
Right now, it's going into the campground, but that's being changed as we speak.
But I mean, it's over 100 sites you're feeding?
189 sites down there.
So obviously, you've got plenty of water there for...
So on his side, he's got the water in the sewer.
We're in an aquifer.
Yeah, yeah. Ideally, the town's really set up for small, individual residential units because most people that'll live in town, most of their life, have never been in an apartment and it's a big transition change to go from a single family or an old farmhouse into a apartment type thing, but, so I think it is kind of two avenues would be, you know, if we're looking for the elderly in the single floor living, 1,000, 1,200 square foot homes, affordable type housing for them is one aspect and the other would be multifamily buildings. And just by saying the word apartment, you would probably get a lot of no votes for it. So you have to change that stigma of it, that we don't want apartments.
Kind of like putting in a trailer park, Jim.
Kind of like putting in a trailer park.
When they come up many years ago, that was nasty, nasty.
But I've seen some great manufactured housing parks and most of them were 55 and older. I mean, that's just a huge market everybody's going for right now because that's, we're all falling into that.
And the construction standards of those, that prefab thing is a lot different than it was 50 years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it is different that Jim is using an existing building that predates the zoning.
Right.
He's not building what you just had on the screen in Dover, which is, I do, I understand they're both multifamily dwellings, but there's a difference there. The new construction of this, it could be considered eyesore.
You change your zoning, you're...
Right, well, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that we want to be careful how much we open the door.
Yeah.
That's what I meant about baby and death.
Yeah, 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 we're saying the same thing on that.
Yeah. So is there any relation between new construction and, tell me, like?
Pre-existing.
Yeah.
So just being used, Gavin.
Yeah, I mean, it would be good to, and we're definitely going to want to consider that.
Under conditional use.
Yeah.
Like, it would be allowed for the conditional use permit where it's pre-existing, the building.
Mm-hmm, potentially.
That's what you're saying?
Right.
Is he planning to add on to that building?
Well, you never know what's going to happen in the future too.
Yeah, funny, as we draft the ordinances and we try to think of all the loopholes and stuff and then all of a sudden, somebody that has all those storage buildings down to hers says, I won't put apartments in my existing buildings or something. It's like, oh, never thought of that. So I, we try to keep the regulations as clean and as simple as possible and again, we just have to look at, do we want to encourage some, a larger living facility of the, and we've talked about that before, we've got to figure a better word than apartment building. Because they just have always had a bad statement. I mean, that's always where the cops have to go, it's always where, you know, it just looked like a junkyard out in front and, but it's workforce housing. Definitely, people are getting driven away from 95 to the ocean. Nobody can afford that size that grew up there. So, and you see it, this area here, within an hour, you have Portland, Fort Smith, Conway, Manchester, that's a huge workforce and again, now people are working from home, they're not even leaving the house, so... I think maybe we'll just, everyone kind of pick a town and just do some snooping, do some Googling at night and see what other places do. As you get to the city, they have the housing authorities and things like that where it's offset. And I think Gavin said, open the door or something like that. Once it's attractive, that's where the federal money comes and the bigger places get built. I know we're really just talking with Jim's one issue, but once we change regulations, that's where the doors are open.
It's all in the language?
All in the language. And, well, we've got to look at what the avenue the town wants to do and the board, the planning board is the one that drives it to draft up the ordinances and then get support from the community for our public hearings and things like that to convince, this is what we're thinking, this is how times are changing and we, most of our kids as they grow up, they can't afford where so much water's running down. And then now we are fighting to zone in 350 feet around Frontage, those aren't cheap lots. All our subdivisions, they're, you know, they're putting the sprinkler systems in. By the time you're done building the house, I'm sure they're 350, 400, it doesn't take long to drive this process up.
I could name a half dozen elderly people that used to be real $10,000.
Yeah.
Had to leave town because of a big house or they just, they would love to a stadium, but there's nowhere else to sit.
And as we broaden, some of the 55 older community, Eagle Trace and things like that, those are, it's not affordable housing, it's a great community, they've got great residents down in there, but they, that's clusters, one acre zoning down there is what they did their house lots at, I'm sure those are 400 plus.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've talked about it for years and years and years, we need the regulations. The town and the board wants to head that way to encourage some of this political elderly housing. The new 55 is 62, we see 62 and older quite a bit around, but of course, they don't want to lose that window of people. At 55 and older, the people still have boats, have snowmobiles, they're still active people, so, you know, they do need a little bit areas for things and it's a different setup than a big apartment building.
I think that's one of our obligations is planning board.
That's the word I was looking for.
That, we do need to address elderly needs.
Because we're driving them right out of town.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
But also the affordability of it too, I mean, we can...
No, no, you're right.
You know, that seems even trickier in a way because we can build this thing, but then, I mean, even $600, $800 a month in rent, that adds up, that's not, I wouldn't consider that affordable elderly housing. You know what I mean? Affordable elderly housing is like...
That's ridiculous.
Your bills are reduced to a minimum, you know, not just, and that's, you know, you put up a whole new place.
$100 for a one bed apartment in Sanford.
For Cooper. Yeah, they're going to want to give their return. That's why with Jim, where he has the building, it's like an opportunity, but how many of those, like, how many opportunities are there to create affordable elderly housing with the existing infrastructure of the town and how many would require the creation of new complexes? And then, then dealing with the costs of that. But I guess if it was subsidized by the federal government or something like Ken was saying...
In the beginning, you mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, you get the cost of renting these things down, but...
And a lot of the bigger buildings, your heat's included, the electricity, cable, a lot of that's included in the one price there, but when you hit that 55, 62 and older, your services for the town are very limited as well too. Usually, the police aren't going there all the time, the fire department's not going there, it's a sprinkler protected building and it's easy access, it's designed for the older people. If the ambulance goes there, there's a $2,000, $3,000 building that comes and it's easy for that. Usually, there's a dumpster all these people recycle, so the...
Which means they don't have children, $1,000 student.
Exactly. But it sounded like there's plenty of room down the school, he's...
And we're still heating.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And on the resource.
Yeah, on the other tax base, but it's an offset thing. And as we looked at this years ago, it was almost, you know, if it's, if it's something we really needed, zoning is the first place to start. And then if the town said, we keep losing our residents, we need to find a piece of property and find a developer that does these all over the place and bring them in to work as a team effort where you have, in lieu of taxes, we want you to cover, you can, to attract somebody, you do industrial parks all the time to bring that type of business in. And I know some of the places we were looking at, at bringing in more business, more industrial, more manufacturing, that brings people, younger people, that buy more houses, that have kids in the school, so sometimes bringing all these jobs to town will buy you too.
Cost you money.
Because it's going to cost you more. So it's, it's a lot to weigh, that's for sure, but Jim brings a real problem to us as far as we definitely need to look at our 55 and older or affordable housing, whether it's the entry level or the aging population, because he just has four units he's trying to do in his regular building, but...
You could do more for the older ones.
Yeah.
Or if you lose them.
Absolutely.
And I've talked with, I've talked with some developers that talk about it, but once you get halfway down the H Road, I don't think it's selling units, it's just too far. Similar to the subdivision that was done on St. Paige Road, those all sold in six, eight months or something because people came from Sanford, they got out of Sanford environment, taxes, but it was only right up the street. They can almost still see the streetlights from Sanford and, I mean, that was just a perfect location for that and it's just finding somebody that...
Where is that, Jim?
On St. Paige at the end, down by Goose Home, Philly Glance.
Nathan.
Nathan.
Subdivision Nathan.
Yes, Nathan.
And those are, those are small homes that would work with elderly people.
And I think you could still cut that down dramatically.
And you have some last pieces of property within a half a mile of 109. And you have some last pieces of property within a half a mile of 109, uh, that potentially, this could happen with, I mean, you know, some very big pieces of property.
Ideally, it's an old sand pit or something like that.
No, I, I agree, I mean, uh, the old fairing place down on, on Goose Pond, um, that's a huge piece of property. Um, the one up there, going towards Jim's, that's a 400-acre piece of property or whatever it is. I mean, there's a lot of property in this zone.
Or the street off of Baker Road, that new house right there. What do you like, is that something you'd eat?
Yeah. And so that was a cluster subdivision where all this land got set aside back there. Originally, when the developer came in, those houses were going to be everywhere, they were going to put a tremendous infrastructure in with the roads and things like that, and then, once they understood what we meant by cluster subdivision, um, their road costs disappeared, their utilities disappeared, and, uh, the houses all sold, so.
And plus you're conservative more of the environment.
Exactly.
Which is what another goal that we have.
And those houses there, substantially what square footage are, you could clear that, Ken?
Um, they're probably maxed out in general, and of course, you, you gotta, it's gotta be marketable.
Right.
That's one.
I'm talking about where the elderly.
Yeah, I mean, that's 14, 15, 16, 17, it's probably 2,000 square feet plus a basement down there.
Pretty size, huh?
Yeah.
But you look at that, I mean, you still.
Still 250.
Still got to shovel off your car, I mean, you got a garage, you still got to shovel off your front step, and like, some of these multifamily complexes might even be more ideal for.
Maintenance comes and takes care of all that for them.
Yeah, there's only one front doorway to, you know, everyone, I, I don't know, I mean, it's, you just think about some of these issues when you're, you know, if I was 85 years old, living in that thing, there'd be a whole ton of stuff I couldn't do, potentially, or that I'd be concerned about not being able to do in the future, um.
And this wasn't old couple that moved into this two, three years ago, and they're already thinking they need to start looking.
Are you going with the one at the very end?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could easily have a place half that size.
Right, we just have to, how do we plant the seed to get a developer to undertake that kind of project, whether we putting in affordable, small, ground-level, not super-long driving, whatever, units?
Yeah. You know, um, attractive zoning that, that encourages them, uh, you know, the town that wants them, they're not going to have a big fight to get in or something like that, and it, it's.
But it's hard, don't you think they could make more money if they, they added those extra square feet and that extra garage and the, and then it, it makes it less affordable in a way, too? You know, but then, but they want to do that to, to, to get their return.
And, and, and then you have to look at, it doesn't appraise out because it's only a two-bedroom. I was looking at another 55, we were actually talking about 55 and older, and they were talking two bedrooms, and, you know, we sat talking with railers and crazers, why don't you want the third bedroom? And this is the same thing we talked to the 80 unit units when we were going to start limiting bedrooms with that. Sometimes as you get older, he's in one bedroom, she's living out, there's two bedrooms on right now, you don't have room for somebody to come with you or, or the 80s, so, and that's the other side, you have to appraise out high enough, or unless it's all cash buyers, so it's attractive, too.
Well, there must be some enough profit in it somehow, somewhere, because there is a lot of it that does happen, you know, um, so somebody must make some money on it somewhere.
In this market right here, maybe they will sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, period, yeah. Student property maintenance, I see their signs on a lot of these places every year. Uh, they're, they're all over, um, so they know, they know what they're looking for, and they have their market and their criteria for it, so I'll try to touch base with some of those people to see what, 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 what are they looking for? You know, what, what brings them, what attracts them?
I mean, Sanford has a full house, and.
Yeah.
Rob Rankin.
Yeah.
Do want.
Yeah.
They do a lot.
Yeah.
I got no idea how any of works, but.
Yeah, I know, hey, but would anyone love to say that could put.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah.
There's no place to go.
No, no, the house is too big, they're, it's too grand, it is, basically, you can't afford to put the oil in the tank, and then these old houses.
You know what made a difference is, um.
Yeah, yeah.
You got.
All right, so we got something to do, we'll just do some Googling, look at other, uh, communities, see what they do, what they do to attract.
Alfred's got the old drunk tank. Do you remember that?
What?
The old drunk tank in Alfred, right on, uh, Route 111, just past the courthouse that used to be.
The jail.
Yeah, the old jail.
Well, they sell campers there now.
But behind that.
I know it, but I won't tell you why.
Yeah, but behind that, there's a one-story 55 and older community, well, now they transferred it to other people, too.
Yeah.
Uh, when it first came out, it was 55 and older.
Is it one building with units?
Uh, it's, let me think, there's four units per building, and it's all one-story, they got, you know, nice turnaround and, you know, trash dumped and stuff, so. It's not very sprawling either, it's, it's all compact. They got like the community room with washer and dryer, they use and stuff like that.
Anything else for us, Jim?
That's it for me. Uh, basically, uh, I'm just trying to break the ice and get this thing, hopefully, going through the planning board. Uh, how I look at it is, this is my easiest route, uh, of, uh, making this happen. Uh, I would definitely rather deal with the planning board, which I respect very highly, uh, than try to deal other means, legal means, or going out and getting signatures and dealing with the selectmen. Uh, I know it was, it's going to end up coming back to this board to deal with anyhow, so if I can, uh, if I can get the, uh, ball rolling and, uh, see if we can get something to happen down the road, uh, I realize that it's going to be a time-consuming venture. I know it has to go in front of a town meeting, but if we don't start someplace, we're never going to get to, get to the end. And, uh, my main, my main issue is paying, paying my expenses up there. Uh, the thing that, uh, I look at the most every time I drive in is that $115,000 septic system that sits out there that I had to pay for upfront. I would just like to, uh, find the means to, to make it somewhat profitable. Uh, we've tried, uh, we've tried the commercial end of it, which, you know, and going on five years, is basically, I've had one, one person call, we've put it on, uh, we've had it on Craigslist, uh, it's been listed with Town, Town Square Realty for, uh, three years, um, you know, for rental space, no hits, no nothing, uh, and they tell me basically why is that it's in the town of Acton, there's no, there's no people in the town of Acton. But, uh, so you got to find, you would have to find the right person, and, uh, I just haven't, over four and a half to five years, I haven't found the right person, and I got to do something to, uh, to move the finances a little bit, uh, paying the taxes and the fire insurance on the building, uh, even though I have, uh, one very good tenant, uh, that's just about enough to keep me afloat, and, uh, I need, I need to continue and, uh, move on. And I'm just hoping that, uh, this, this committee can, can help me out and move forward and see if we can get some, some items changed that definitely need to be changed. Um, my feeling about the commercial, uh, commercial zones, A, B, and C, doesn't mean a, doesn't mean a thing, uh, because you go into a rural area, you, same process, you got to come, uh, to the code enforcement officer, then you got to come through the planning board, no matter what, but why do you need a commercial zone? Every commercial zone has a different criteria, uh, road frontage, some you have to have three acres of land, uh, down by the Trading Post, three acres of land and some other different items. Uh, I kind of, my feeling is that it should all be the same. You require two acres of land, you come in front of the planning board, you speak your case, the planning board takes it up, they make their decision, uh, you figure out what you have to do. I think that runs terrifically, and I think that served this town for a long time and still, and it will serve it for quite a few more years doing that. But I think it, uh, in reference to commercial zones, how it affects the person who owns property in the commercial zone, like myself, you, you definitely have some problems that you have to deal with to get anything done, just because they put that little zone on one side of the street just to, uh, just to mark out our family business, you know, uh, that has been a thorn in our side ever since it's been done. And I would like to see it get changed. Yes, and I'd like to put apartments in, so, uh, I guess I'm saying that, uh, I'm looking at this committee to help us out, to, uh, put it in front of the townspeople, in front of the selectmen. Uh, I really don't want to go, I really don't want to go up for a petition, uh, petition and bring it back in and give it to the selectmen, because I, I feel that my position of leaving the planning board is going to, is going to cause me to get any petition I submit to the town just thrown aside and never had anything done with it. Uh, until our selectmen board changes or anything, this is my only route to go that I feel that, uh, I can deal with normal, normal people, normal folks. And, uh, been in the odd situation, uh, and, uh, I have total confidence in this committee will, if they decide to undertake it, will do the best job possible. And I thank you for your time tonight, I, uh, I probably only ascertained eighty, twenty percent of what you guys said because I couldn't hear you, so the next time this is on TV, I will, I will, uh, listen to it. Uh, I spent $5,000 on two hearing aids, wore them once, took my mask off, and there, there went my hearing aid, so.
I think, Jim, I think that if we pick up something reasonable, I think the selectmen will.
Yeah, yeah.
Be reasonable, be good people.
Yeah.
We have to train on this.
I don't blame you for everything you do.
I think reading some of this didn't plan for it.
Somebody with a map.
Yeah.
And you, somebody five hundred feet down the road, and you've been paying taxes on this property for years, and it's just, it just doesn't make sense.
There's three, three options, uh, that are out in front of me. Uh, option number one, uh, is me coming in front of the planning board. Option number two is doing the, uh, doing the petition, uh, and see where it goes, and I, I've seen where some petitions go when you're not in the right place. Option number three, which, uh, I totally don't even want to think of, is legal, legal action. Uh, I don't feel that legal action, this is my town, I live in my town, uh, if I go get a lawyer, the town's got to get a lawyer, it's costing me twice as much, you know, uh, cost, I'm paying for both ends, and I really don't think that we have to go that direction. Uh, I believe that this committee, this committee could, uh, deal with this over the next six months or so and, uh, submit it to the selectmen, whatever they come up with. I feel that, uh, whatever the, the code office, you know, this committee comes up with, in reference to my issue, I'll, I can live with any, anything that comes out of this committee, because I, I have a lot of, uh, respect for the code enforcement, uh, people and this committee, and, uh, whatever comes out of it, I'll have to live with. So, I thank you for your time.
He chose the right avenue, right? Come with everybody on this committee.
Yeah, thank you. I thank you for your time, uh, of listening to me. Uh, I wish I could hear a lot more of what you guys were saying, but, uh, I guarantee you, after talking with Dennis, uh, I know more than, more than what I hopefully did. Right, Dennis?
Yes, Jim.
So.
You can always hear me, Jim.
That's right. So, what happened? Was I your only, uh, person of the night?
We came in just for you.
Well, Mr. Paul, I always thought that you were an intelligent man, but if you had a chance.
What might you have?
If you had a chance to stay home tonight because you only had one, one person, I would definitely, uh, understood that. But thank you for, uh, coming in tonight.
Thank you as well.
We were supposed to have the fairgrounds on there tonight? Was that it, or?
Nobody answers the phone on, huh?
No. Any idea of the agenda for next time?
Uh, we'll be into December at that point.
December 6th, Ken, does that sound right?
December 3rd.
Really?
3/17.
Holy moly.
So, we can fit two pretty readily, unless anybody objects to that.
Yep, we'll see how the COVID flow is going, how things are settling, uh, probably the second meeting, uh, people, probably just, we're not allowed to go anywhere else and stuff, so, you know, we'll see.
Meeting the 2nd, 3rd?
That's the first Thursday.
Always the fir-, hopefully always the first and third Thursdays of the month.
You guys are comfortable with the tables, are they out still?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great, I even look at people when you're talking.
Yeah, you can look and see it's, yeah, we'll have to rethink if we start having public come in for different projects and stuff, but hopefully, things die out and we get back to our old novel, not the new novel.
That would be nice. We might have to build a new building so that we can have the square footage, so that we can have. we can have our meetings.
Isn't it just 50 people or can you get 100?
Well, right now it's 50, but I'm just saying that, you know, we might have to build something like, uh.
I don't know if the planning board would.
The Sanford Jim or something. Yeah, we give them a hard time where they go put it.
Use the grandstands, have a fair ground.
Exactly.
Put some tops over the side.
Yeah, yeah. Don't use propane, it adds too much moisture.
Yeah, that's right. That's all I can.
Can you get a motion to adjourn then?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Only thing about.
I, I was, uh, waiting for, uh, move full time.